We have everybody currently in the room.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Uh, okay, good afternoon. It's like since we're on Zoom, it's kind of out, out of sorts, not used to it on my end. I had to up, update things and stuff. So, um, this, this, this is the special, special, special board me, meeting of the, the Adalanto elementary school district. It is Tues- Tuesday, no, November, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty, and the time is five thirty, thirty-three P M. Um, can we get a roll, roll call, please?
Trystee Ekis?
Is she un, unmute, muted?
I've asked her to unmute, but it's weird with the phone.
I'll come back to her, Trystee LaFrench.
LaFrench present.
Trystee Webster.
Webster present.
Trystee Benz.
Benz pre- present.
Trystee Turner will be running a little late, and I have Trystee Ekis.
Yes, present.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, one point zero zero four pledge, pledge of allegiance, please stand. Place your right, right hand over your, your heart. Ready, be, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liv- liberty and ju- justice for all. Thank you. All right, go, go, going on to adoption of the, the agenda. Agenda, we've got two point zero zero one, pro- proposed additions, deletions and, and adjust, adjustments in the, the order of biz, business.
Madam President, we do have two items. Item three point oh three, there's an adjustment, uh, and it was just a clerical error on the, um, the case and the student ID. It should read as twenty twenty-two point twen- twenty twenty-three point oh three, and the student ID number should be three, four, three, one, two, eight. Also on item nine point oh one, referring to that same, uh, we're doing the same thing. It should read as case number two, zero, two, two point two, zero, two, three point oh three, and the student number should be three, four, three, one, two, eight.
Okay. I, I need, um, go, going on to two point zero zero, zero, two, uh, adoption of the, the agenda, agenda. I, I need a mo- motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion from LaFrench, and I need a sec, second.
Ekis?
Ekis, okay, I got a sec, second from Ek, Ekis. Please call for, for the vote.
Trystee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trystee, uh, LaFrench.
LaFrench, I.
Trystee Ekis.
I.
Trystee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- mo- motion pa- passes for zero. Right, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I go, go, going on to three closed sess- session dec- declarations. We, we will be, be ta- taking i- items three point zero two and three point zero three into closed sess- session. Uh, so go, going on to four pub, public test, testimony, moni, be, be before closed sess- session. Um, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Good evening, everyone. I will read the public comment period for closed session items listed on this agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board and rules that govern such matters. The public period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an A E S D speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot, the board cannot take action or discuss items, not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time of three minutes, or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off for one last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue, and may ask that the additional persons speak only if they have something need to add. And that concludes the, uh, reading of the public comments for closed session, Madam President.
All right, thank, thank you. Okay, so let's go, go on to four point zero, zero, two. Do, do, do we have a rep, represent, sentative from A, A D T A?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see anyone raising their hand representing A D T A in the room?
No one's raising their hand, no.
Mr. Sinatra, we should have someone representing by the name of Denise Braille. Do we see anyone by that name?
Yes, Denise Braille is on. I will ask her to unmute.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Kraus, members of the cabinet and trustees. I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving and a nice week off. Our teachers needed the break very badly. We've had been going through a lot this year. I have some specific concerns to bring to you this evening, and this list was assembled through a group effort from leaders in our teachers' union. Number one, attendance concerns loom large on everyone's mind. We need to fight hard to reverse the message we sent during the pandemic, that it is not that important to be in school. We need a pub, a publicity campaign, complete with radio ads and billboards, flyers and incentives to encourage families who have adopted a laissez-faire attitude about being in school. Illness is one thing, but we have students staying home just because it isn't convenient for the parents to get them to school. We all need to emphasize the importance of being in class in person. Google Classroom and Lexia are not enough. This brings us to number two. Since, uh, A D A drives the budget, teacher salaries. We are simply not competitive with the surrounding districts. This has been the case for years. Sadly, we were once aligned with Victor Elementary a few years back, but this is no longer the case. We have teachers who are leaving us for Hesperia, Apple Valley, and Victor Unified. Why? Better salary, quicker commute, and unfortunately, an easier student base. Teachers in Adalanto love our students. Many teachers will tell you our work is as much a ministry as a vocation. Kids these days are hard in general, but when you lack on, when you tap on poverty, trauma, and lack of support, it becomes unbearable at times. And related to this issue is the sixty percent required by the state to be spent on salary and benefits. Last year, we did not meet our threshold of spending sixty percent on salary and benefits for teachers. We were far below this. This needs to be corrected. Inflation has directly impacted teachers, yet the district did not meet its legal obligation to spend sixty percent of its operating bu- budget on staff. This means less money on every teacher's paycheck, less money coming into our homes hurts. I am sure you can relate. Finally, the teacher shortage. As you are well, well aware, we are in a teacher shortage. It will not get better in the coming years. We have guest teachers taking on much greater roles in the classroom than they were intended. We have students being serviced by unqualified people. I respect our guest teachers. Most of us started our own teaching careers as guest teachers. But being a guest teacher is not the same as being a fully credentialed teacher. This is an ongoing problem that A E S D either doesn't want to solve or doesn't know how to solve. But it is not rocket science. We need a better salary schedule than the surrounding districts. You, our Board of Trustees, were elected to run and manage this school district. If we cannot attract and keep the teachers we need to run a school district, are you really doing your job? It is your job to make the policies that will create a district that is competitive with others in our local area. Please consider these issues this year as we work with the district on negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, 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 do we have a rep, represent, sentative from C, C S C A?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see anybody raising your hand? I'm looking as well.
I don't see anyone raising their hand unless somebody's texted, Zania.
Not that I'm aware of, okay. Doesn't look like it, Madam President, for C S C A this evening.
Okay, so let's go, go on to four point zero, zero, three, odd, audience men, members.
Yes, Madam President, we do have speakers for closed session this evening. And, uh, just as a reminder, uh, twenty minutes for any topic unless the board president, uh, decides to extend the comments. We do have several, uh, on a topic this evening, and I'd like to start with, uh, Mr. Bill Thomas, and welcome Mr. Thomas to unmute and, uh, join us this evening.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was having a problem unmuting. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, sorry, okay. Sorry about that. Well, good evening to, uh, the board members and superintendent and, uh, all staff. My name is Bill Thomas. I am the political action and community service representative with the, uh, Victor Valley in A A C P. And I called in this evening because I have some concerns about a letter of reprimand issued to Mrs. Carla Hamilton Yates. And, uh, I, I read the write-up and so forth, and I understand that Mrs., uh, Flip and Mrs. Yates had some words. And I do know that there were some hot-button topics, uh, in that, and I don't know who said what, but, uh, when you start talking about religious practices and you throw racial overtones in, in there, uh, it can cause a heated situation. And, uh, I just think that, as I look at your, uh, write-up for what she was actually, uh, disciplined for, as I looked at those items one by one, number one, I hope that, uh, both parties were disciplined. Because, again, if, if you have yelling by two grownups, then it clearly, uh, both bullshit should be controlled, but I just want to make sure that there's fairness here. And, and I know it's, I know it is a, uh, an issue with, uh, H R and so forth, and confidentiality applies, but, uh, there's still the, the ideal fairness there. Uh, I have known Mrs. Yates for many, many years and have found her to be, when I say that, I mean, as a member of an organization, the, the N double A C P, and I found her to be really very level in her demeanor. So, uh, for her to get excited enough to raise her voice, uh, it meant that someone was, uh, attacking her in some manner. Now, I'm not placing all the blame on, on, uh, the other party. I'm just saying that it would, there were two adults involved, and I do hope at the very least that this same type write-up was given to Mrs. Flip, because it appears that she participated in it equally. And, uh, probably should, should have been the bigger one to step up and say, we need to, uh, uh, just take this to a principle or, you know, some other way of, of dealing with it instead of, you know, shouting and so forth. But, uh, a part of the, uh, uh, write-up says that you shall treat all staff with proper respect, dignity, and sensitivity. Well, again, that goes for all people, and, and your administrator, your administrators above all, should be showing restraint. And, uh, I just, again, I would like to, uh, say that I do oppose this letter of reprimand going to Mrs. Yates, and I think I've met my time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank, thank you. You're, you're mute, muted there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Now, next, we'd like to call Ms. Denise Braille back up. Uh, Ms. Braille, I, I believe you also want to speak on this, uh, topic as well. And if not, just, uh, let us know.
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, great. We'd like to welcome Ms. Braille to the, to the audience.
Good evening, trustees and members of the cabinet. My name is Denise Braille, and I would like to speak about my working relationship with Carla Yates. I began working with Carla in two thousand and ten at George. We were team teaching third grade. She was an amazing partner to work with. I had many o- other opportunities to work with her as she was an administrator for, uh, Saturday School and also summer school. She was also the A, A I A C at George for a while, and she was very helpful and supportive as an admin, and I think she is a great leader. I always felt comfortable to talk to her about any ideas or concerns I had. She maintained a great relationship with me, and I think, uh, she's an asset to any school as an administrator. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you.
And next, Madam President, uh, on the same topic, we'd like to welcome, uh, Mr. Michael Yates to the audience. Mr. Yates, if you would unmute, welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Excellent. Hi, I am Michael Yates, a national representative to for the American Legion, uh, for Congressman Obernoty's, uh, eighth district. I deal with things on a national level, constantly with the American Legion and other, uh, forums. Um, Carla Hamilton Yates, I'd like to speak on behalf of her, uh, in regards to the letter. And not only is she also my spouse, but she's also a leader in the American Legion, um, the auxiliary where she has worked with youth and, uh, to help train and provide good understanding, but I've used her at the national level where she's actually spoken, met with the Congress, and benefited the process about education. She is a natural leader. She has a good demeanor, and she works well with others. When some time where there was an issue, that meant that there was something that transpired that was above and beyond the process of doing things, and that would have been the relationship between her and Ms. Philip. If that process came to the point of a raised issue of conversation, even, uh, expressions that are loud, the thing between them would have noted that there was an issue that should have been looked at or viewed. When I looked at the disciplinary actions that was taken and reviewed the information, it just seemed like there was nothing done in between, no one to do consult. I did not see that, uh, the administration, Mr. Kraus and Mr. Moran, I believe, uh, or Dr. Moran, Dr. Kraus, if, uh, forgive me if I didn't address the titles correctly. But the key thing is, one has to, as my time in the military, as a retired colonel, you have to take your leaders and invest in them, provide information with them, do training with them. And when you've got a leader that you've invested much time in, as we have with the military, the last thing we do is dismiss them. We move them, we train them, we put them in other positions. Sometimes staff don't work well together, and then we move them, and then we provide good training, and we find out that that staff, um, turned out to be our best staff. And I think that Mrs. Yates, uh, Hamilton Yates, that she is a benefit not only to your school, to the district. She's also at the board at the college, um, the foundation board, and she's also at the national level, speaking with the Congress, or at least with Congressman Obernoty and others on education. And to take her out of a leadership position as an administrator would be definite loss to the school. I would not concur with that, but I think you've got a person who will do a great job for you and will continue to work for you, who loves children, and she's always fighting for them, and that's what you need. System.
Time is up. Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, next, Madam President, on the same topic, we'd like to welcome Ms., uh, Evelyn Glasper to the meeting. Welcome, Mrs. Glasper. You can unmute, or Mr. Sinatra, help her unmute.
Am I muted?
Yes. Okay.
Good evening, uh, Board President and Trustees, Cabinet and Staff. I'm, uh, Evelyn Glasper, a community activist. I'm also a retired educator and, uh, former board member and president of the Adalanto Elementary School District. And I have worked with, um, Ms. Yates, Carla Hamilton Yates, on several boards and committees. And I know her both professionally and personally. I was always impressed with the way that she handled the situations at the various school sites, and she was always there to make Adalanto Elementary School District shine. And that is by doing everything professionally and doing what's best, even going into her own pockets to make sure that the students of Adalanto Elementary School District were treated equally, given the area in which this district is in. Um, she's, she has a desire to serve, uh, equitably to parents, students, coworkers, and she's just, had, she has an impeccable, uh, desire to do what's right and to do what's best for the community. Um, she's always looking for positive ways to show growth and diversity, equity, and inclusion for Adalanto Elementary School District. Uh, I've noticed or had the opportunity to see some cultural responsiveness to her that seemed unfair on several occasions, and that is something in our society today that we need to start looking at in order to make world a better place for all people of concern. And I just want to make sure that Ms. Yates is given fair judgment and equity in the situation that she's facing right now with the letter of reprimand, because it would be a loss to the district, community, and all concerned to leave, to leave and, um, take her away from a position where she can make a difference for our district and community. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Hold on, it, there's, there's a lot of noise going on. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, we'd like to welcome Ms. Milva Davis to the, uh, audience for, uh, comments. Welcome, Ms. Davis and Mr. Sinatra, if you could make sure she's unmuted as well.
Me unmute now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, good evening. First of all, I'm hopeful that all of you can hear me.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Commercial on, on, was it A T T? Can you hear me now, or is that Verizon? I don't remember. I couldn't work for them. I can't even get the phone company right. Nevertheless, good evening to the Board President, to all of the Board members, the Cabinet, to the Superintendent, to all staff and community who are there today. It's a pleasure and honor to be here. First of all, I'd like to say I'm here to speak on, uh, toward Carla Hamilton Yates as far as her character and as an educated and as colleague. I've had the privilege of working with her as a mentor through Riverside County Office of Education in the administrative certificated program, which is run by and approved by the State of California. It is only one of two counties in the entire state in Southern California that were credential administrators. Carla Yates came through that program, uh, eight years ago, and I had the honor and privilege of working as her mentor. I have seen nothing less than impeccable, uh, stellar performance and, and performance in everything she does. She's very professional. She's very thorough. She has devised and introduced, um, all kinds of data and ways of disaggregating data in order to make sure that all needs of every child, which is what Mrs. Glasper said, and all the speakers before me said, is true leadership. She believes in inclusion. She believes in equity. She believes in equality. She teaches it. She models it. She is that. Anytime any one of us are caught in a situation, especially this one, this situation has been ongoing. And because I was her mentor, and R C O E Riverside County Office of Ed tells us that's a life position, not just a two-year program. Carla had shared this information confidentially only, that there were some issues that needed to be addressed. And she talked about this last, this past June, that there were some issues, and they continued. They didn't get better. My concern is, where is the due process for Mrs. Yates? Did we give her an opportunity? Did we place an assistance plan with Mrs. Yates? That's who we're talking about. I don't want to name any other person, but I'm talking specifically Mrs. Yates. She has a right to due process. She has a right to tell her side. She has a right to be heard, and she has a right to be offered an assistance plan if there is deemed a problem or an issue with her, and that's what I'm waiting to see. I'm wondering, as a district, where have we done that? Where have we shown that we support all staff? Administrators, teachers, because we all are. Thank you. I see my time's up.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one more speaker on this topic. Uh, we'd like to welcome Ms. Michelle Walden to the, uh, audience. If, uh, Ms. Walden, if you can unmute, or Mr. Sinatra, help her unmute, please, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Cabinet, um, and everybody. On Monday, August twenty-ninth, we received an email from Mr. Upshaw telling the staff that Ms. Yates had been given a temporary assignment, and she would be working with academic services to assist them, and that her duties would be split between the two remaining admin. This was devastating for me, as I am the current E L D coordinator and help run school-wide testing for CASP. These, both these programs are directly under Ms. Yates. I only agreed to be the E L D coordinator because Ms. Yates was in charge of it. I love working with Ms. Yates. I knew that if I worked with her, that the program would be done right, and it would be, and I would not be left hanging, not knowing what to do, just do your best. Um, each step in the process of learning, Ms. Yates was there. And not just, I'm here to help, you know, let me know. She took the time to train me step by step, help me, helping me do any of the E L D forms that I didn't know how to fill out, helping me work with our E L D teachers, making sure our teachers and students had everything they needed to make progress in their E L D classes. Um, and most importantly, she helped make a plan to continue the positive progress in our program. Under Ms. Yates' guidance, Columbia was able to redesignate eight students this month, with hopefully three more in January. Last year, we did not redesignate a single student. It was because of Ms. Yates that we have eleven students this year who will possibly redesignate, and we hope to double those numbers next year. Despite being moved to the district office, she tried to continue supporting our E L D program. On September seventh, we held our first ELAC meeting with nine parents attending. That was the most we'd ever had. We were able to hold elections and to get the parents excited about being the part of the progress. Since Ms. Yates is gone, we have not held another ELAC meeting, not one. We haven't had a single school-site council meeting. We've had one leadership meeting, and today I couldn't even do my E L D presentation because we had so many teachers out that half our staff wasn't there. Why punish someone for one incident in her whole career when the boss has had four or five paid vacations while the district investigated whatever it was that year that got him in trouble, and yet he continued to come back unscathed? What a shame to demote two me, two people who are here fighting for their positions, who truly do care about their jobs, while the other retires and again walks away unscathed. The leader of the House let the family down. Don't punish the family because the leader failed. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our speakers for closed session. Madam President, that concludes our speakers for closed session this evening.
All right, thank, thank you. Okay, so now we go, going on to 5.01. Reese, recess to close sess- session. Can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster, I motion.
Okay, and I need a sec, sec, second.
Love French, I second.
Okay, and call for the vote. Sorry about that. Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Christie LaFrance?
Love French, I.
Christie Akis? She, she may have been mute, muted because there was a lot of noise from her side. Mr. Sinatra, is she available to?
I'm asking her to unmute again.
Thank you. Trustee Ben?
Ben, I.
Trustee Akis? Trustee Akis?
I'm just waiting.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know, there is no noise on my end, so I don't know why I got muted. So I'm the only one here. It is dead silent at my home, and I don't know why I got muted. But other than that, I vote yes.
Yeah. Very mo- motion pass, passes for zero, zero. The time is now 6:04. We'll see you on the other side. Okay, we just gotta wait for trustee Webster. She'll be here in a minute. Okay, I think we're here. Hey. Uh, so, so Mrs. Love, Love A, what did trust, trustee turn, Turner, was she, she in the meet, meet, meeting? No, I, we could not. We tried to communicate to her. I did not hear back from her. Okay, all right, then. Just, just check. Just checking. Okay, so let's go ahead and we recon, convene. The time is now 6:52. Can you please call roll? Trustee Akis?
I.
Christie LaFrance?
Present.
See Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Here.
Do we hear, do we see trustee Turner? Mr. Sinatra, do you see her?
I do not. I'll keep looking though.
Thank you. And then trustee Ben? Ben's pres- present. Okay, so the time again is 6:52. Hey, close sess- session, re, re, report. And now, uh, seven point zero, zero, one, and announce, announcement of re, report, portable a, actions take, taken during closed session. Uh, here we go. In clo- close sess- session, the, the board took a action to i- issue a note, notice to the fol- following cer- certificated ad- admin administrative employee, employee that, that they, they wa- will be real released from their ad- admin administrative pos- position, position and re, reassigned per pursuit, suing to the ed- education code section 44951, effective at, at the, the end of the 2022, 2023 school year, and direct, directed the su- superintendent or designate to send out appropriate league legal note, note, notices. The employee not number 24881 per position and a sit assistant admin administrator of instructional improvement and academic coach, coaching. The role, role cal- call vote was as fol- follows. Eyes, trustee Web- Webster, trustee LaFrance, I, trustee Ben's, I. The nose, trustee Akis, and pla- please note that trustee Turner was ab- absent. Okay, going on to eight pub- public test, testimony. Uh, Miss, Mr. Kraus, is there a rep, represent, senator from A, ADT, TA?
Mr. Sinatra, I don't know if Ms. Brill is wanting to speak again for ADT in open session. Do we, let's see, is Ms. Brill still with us?
All unmuted or asked.
Okay.
No, I have nothing today.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Do, do we have a rep, represent, senator from C, CSEA?
Mr. Sinatra, do we, I see Ms. Lynn in the audience. I'm not sure if she's going to be speaking on behalf of CSEA this evening.
I'll unmute Ms. Lynn to ask real quick.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I have nothing to say, but I'm hoping you all had a very nice Thanksgiving and a nice break with your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I go, going on to 8.03 odd audience mem- members?
Yes, Madam President, we do. And before that, I will read the public comment period for open session items verbiage that we have to read. And so this evening, the public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on open session agenda items only must complete and submit an AEST speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If, if the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although they cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting off a person or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each open session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. And that concludes the verbiage for our public speaking. And this evening, we do have a person, Ms. Claudia, or, and I apologize, Arvalo, who would wish to speak on the expulsion item on the open session agenda. Mr. Sinatra, do we see Ms. Arvalo in the Zoom meeting this evening?
Unfortunately, I do not. I'm even looking at the phone number she provided, and it's not the dial-in.
Okay, that is the only public speaker for open session this evening. Madam President, it does not appear that she's in our audience this evening.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you. Okay, so go, going on to nine student, student dis-
There's, there's someone, I'm sorry, there's someone waving for him with an iPhone. I don't know if that's her or not.
iPhone, is, is that? Um, can you unmute them really quick?
Yes, asking them to unmute now.
Okay.
Yes, I am Claudia Arevalo. I am speaking on behalf of Melody Carranza. Um, I wasn't sure which one to pick on, I mean, I don't say public or whatever, but I am here for an exposure, expulsion for the district for Melody Carranza. So I don't know if I'm due to speak now or speak later. I know that you guys have like an agenda. Is it happening now?
Yes, ma'am, this is an open session item, item on the agenda for the explosion before the board this evening is 9.01. And you're, you're able to use your three minutes this evening, ma'am.
Okay, one sec, a second. Ms. Mrs. Love, Love A. Um, I, I have trust, trusty turn, Turner on, on the, your phone, and she, she's, she's on speak, speaker. Thank you. Okay, she, she was unable to get in, into the me, meeting, so I have her on the phone, okay? Thank you. I will document that she joined the meeting at 7 o'clock PM. Okay, great. Thank, thank you. Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sor- sorry. Um, go, go, go ahead and unmute, and you, you may, may start. Oh, wait, she, she's mute, muted.
I just unmuted her again.
Okay.
Yes, hi, my name, sorry, I was, I was muted. My name is Claudia Arevalo. I am Melody Carranza's foster parent. Um, I know that she is due for an expulsion for the district or the county, and I wanted to speak in her behalf that as the district for Adelanto, they've never gave her the proper care for her. They'd never gave her any therapy, any evaluation, anything, anything to cope with any of her behavior issues that she was having at the district. Um, they also never provided her with a therapist. They never provided her with an IEP. Um, she was getting bullied. She did express that to the school, and nothing was being done. Yes, she did take a night to school due to people telling her that she was gonna get jumped. And, you know, fear for her safety, she did take, yes, it was wrong. Uh, then again, you are talking about a 12-year-old. She's been with me for a month now. We're a completely different district. We are in a completely different place. I do have a therapist. I have a wraparound services for her. I've just gotten her evaluated for an IEP. Um, she has As and Bs now, um, with a different district, with obviously a different environment as well. And I really would like for you guys to consider not to expel her from our districts, um, just to allow her, to give her a second chance, not because she's a child of the county means that we have to just throw her in there and forget about her future, because nobody has stopped and helped her, and this is, this is what I'm doing. I'm trying to help her be a better her and give her that opportunity that nobody in the district of Adelanto has given her and not listen to her needs. Um, that's basically my plea. I really would like for you guys to reconsider expulsing her from all county schools, because that obviously would just make it more discouraging for her. And she's really accelerating and doing a lot better as we speak. Um, I feel like she's in a better place, and she's getting all the help that she can get from the district that we're at, at now. Yeah, I know my time is up.
No, okay, thank, thank you. Okay, and are there, and any more odd audience mem- members?
No, Madam President, that's the only person that has requested to speak this evening.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, go, go, going on to 9 uh, point zero, zero, one, acad- academic ser- services, stu- student ex- expulsion, dis- dis- discipline case. Uh, I need a motion to approve.
Love French, I motion to approve.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take the mo- the mo- motion by La, La France. And trustee turn, Turner, will you make, the sec- second comes from trustee turn, turn, Turner? Okay, we are, uh, we do, let me see, it was moved. Okay, the board would like to add on some, some things. Uh, Doc, Doc, Dr. Dwyson, so do I re, read this and then say what we want, wanted for the stu- student?
Yes, that would be okay to do. And, okay, my team is taking notes right now.
Okay, so, um, it, it was moved by trustee Love, La France, and sec- seconded by trustee Turner to approve the rec- recommendation deation of the ad- admin administrative pan- panel to expel the stu- student 343128 for the remain, remainder of the first semester of the 2020, 22, 2023 school year and approve the rec- recommendation of the admin administrative pan- panel to expel the stu- student for the next semester of the 2022, 2023 school year. But the board wan- wanted a full cal- calendar year and, um, on, on alternative edge, edge, education pro- program for the stu- 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 student to be placed in an al- an alternative edge education program for one semester, coun- counseling, um, a, a deci- decision, decision make, making per- program and an anger, anger man and management program and a beha- behavior support plan for the stu- student. We got that?
Yes, I have noted that.
Okay, uh, trustees, do we have an, any com- comments? I, why, I don't think we can com- comment on this, this one. So I, I think we just have, have to go straight to the vote. That is correct, Madam President. I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Christie LaFrance?
Love French, I.
Christie Akis?
I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, mo- mo- motion pass, passes 50, 0.
All right, go, going on to, put her up here. Uh, 10.001 cer- certificated pers- personnel at accept, sent in, excess acceptance of a certificated m- employee, res- resignation. I, I need a mo- motion to approve. Okay, I have a mo- mo- motion by trustee turn, Turner. I need a sec, second.
I second LaFrance.
LaFrance, I guess, six, okay. Uh, do we have any questions, comments? I don't think we can, I'm not sure. Um, hearing none, call for the vote. Um, hearing none, call for the vote. Trustee Webster? Trustee Webster?
Um, yeah, can I vote last? Or second to last? I need a little bit more time.
Trustee Turner? Did you hear her? I. Thank you. Christie La French?
La French, I.
Christie Akis?
No.
Trustee Webster?
No.
Trustee Ben? Ben's, I. Mo- motion pass passes 32. Okay, go, going on to adjournment. I need a mo- motion to approve.
I motion to approve La French.
Okay, we'll go.
Three seconds.
Okay.
Second.
Take your, your, your pick, Ms. Mrs. Love, Love A.
I think I'll take Akis.
Okay, we'll take Akis for, for the sec- second. Uh, please call for, for the vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
You see the French?
La French, I.
Christie Akis?
I.
Christie Ben? Ben's, I. Mo- mo- motion pass passes 5000. Please have a good night. Madam President, the time is 7:10 P M. And the time is now 7:10 P M. I was just so excited. Sorry, excited to go. Okay, have, have a good, good night. Thank, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night.